robbery and we have Goodwill and then the other spaces allocated to be used. We are a little bit overparked, we're within a twenty percent excess, so that will offer that flexibility once we start being able to fill some of those tenant spaces. So other than that, you know, I always on my end like to steal a little bit of the thunder from your consultants here to my right and just address the couple of things that, you know, I think will ultimately be talking points.
So, I'm sorry sir, before you begin, did you just say that there's gonna be on building number two, I can see the drive-through window on the east end, did you just say that the other end cap of that same building would also be restaurant?
It would be a restaurant. You see it in the drawing.
Right.
That is, that is calculated in the apartment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yeah, so the letters, so if we were to, if there's really anything on the fire or tetra tech layer two to talk through, but there's just a couple of items on the safe build letter, we're simply gonna acknowledge that we are within the five hundred feet of the Goodwill's RVs, so that's going to be an item to address, and I also understand that that is an item that is being revised to an extent as we speak, so we'll obviously also wait to see what the outcome of that determination is on any ordinance. As far as item four B, any conflicts with truck turning templates, I did look, there were a few that, I believe the tire path of the semi did hit the curb, so in looking at it, we have the flexibility to adjust at that couple of things, so I'm not concerned about it being there. Item C, as far as coordinating deliveries and refuse, would be pretty standard practice for operations, for the benefit of that operation as well, so acknowledge that, and as far as a separate sign department, we can certainly acknowledge that any and all signage would be in the setting process, so with that being said, if there's anything sensitive related, we'd be happy to discuss, and anything architectural, Robert.
All right, we're gonna head over to Brian first and see what he's got to say.
Mr. Chair, thank you for covering this matter, it's always helpful, I know the commission appreciates it, I don't have to talk to nobody. So, on normal process here, so procedurally, this does require an additional recommendation to touch ordinance finding review authority because of the special needs, which in this case is the restaurant. So, that is my process here tonight, so if we're so inclined to get there, we may be in a position to have a recommendation. So, in terms of these special needs, you know, so I did find that the standard regulations are generally met, often by local county authorities apply. One is, as it relates to the standards of compatibility and many of the impacts, we do have two situations in this building that have use conditions attached to them, so there is also offers to be proposed, like one of restaurants, that has exposed some of these conditions that was being addressed. So, along with those conditions, it's satisfaction, I would typically say to make a clear point that the impact, one of the challenges, my next, my next, as it relates to public facilities and services, I would like to clarify that there is a requirement where authorities need to ensure their, this is part of the process, while the title of the ownership entities, with respect to the first set of use conditions, the price bill is fully applied without receiving requirements, so thank you for all the precautions that we've been executing. So, we're good there, and then as was noted, there are two, two components of the use condition to provide, one of which is not curbed events, one of which will be collected and coordinated with the use property, so the latter is the cross connection, that's the main support, so that is something there, so that's, that's important for us. Is a requirement, is not that cross access being provided for the use, so there is sort of that, that the goal that it requires cannot come to a purpose of cross access connection, that, that is not possible, in this case it's not, but what I'm trying to do is that they're in fact, this is, so. That would be what I, I would probably encourage some level of condition, what would be the recommendations tonight, as what is happening in particular, the lower, I guess the lower part of the, of the two that I mentioned, is the space between right and left runs, so that's later is not that, but as you mentioned, we do currently have a track, the ordinance that is in the process that would allow the conditions of discretion to be not applied to that particular requirement, so we have an additional care of that, and really this point of about to, their desire, their timing, we do provide the basic two options, one would be getting it forward to CBA, if the timing just isn't quite working for this level, or I think our option would be that, we get that ordinance, that usually is effective, and then, then we pursue that option. I take a, I take a pause, I mean, during or any sort of pause on the project, between the mission and the work, and then touch on that, that that, so we'll let the rest of the work out, just as, yes, that's kind of the mission, there's, this is, this is the same.
Quick question out there, Brian, this is proximity to drive-throughs or drive-through restaurants?
Drive-throughs.
Okay, so is it, which restaurant is it that this is, or is the Harvies that's close to?
Harvies.
Okay. Just curious, because the Taco Bell's closer to the Harvies than this is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the reasons that, and I want to bring this project into that discussion, but again, one of the reasons why I think we did have such a detailed discussion with the commission that did choose to identify some ways to sort of mitigate that requirement, there are instances where maybe it's appropriate, instances where maybe it's not, so we'll deal with that when the time comes, but as I understand, maybe that is not, we're not yet through the whole process of.
No, it's gonna be heard at this Wednesday's planning commission, Livingston County Planning Commission meeting, the first reading is for April's twenty-first, and then the second reading for adoption will be at the end of the touch of order.
Okay, so similar, like to the commission, so I guess similar to my, my comments on the cross access, I think if, again, if you were prepared to go for favorable recommendations tonight, some level of a condition has to be, because that does need to be mitigated, whether the commissioner chooses the CBA app, or whether they choose to, again, sort of sit back and see the results of the, it's kind of a bad. That would be the other one, and then the cyclic comments, again, have really already been addressed, so I'm happy to hear that we have corrections to the trust relation. I don't usually, this is kind of a nitpicky one for me, I don't typically get too overly critical when they sort of encroach onto the curb, especially if they're sort of deeper curves, because there is some room there, the one that caught my eye in this one in particular, which is why I brought it up, is it did appear that the tire would actually approach into the lawn or the landscape area, that can become a bit of a maintenance issue for the owners, and can sometimes need to, you know, potentially some extra work or staff if they had to block it, so that's why I brought it up in this particular instance, but it's obviously already got a correction to that, so that's, that's positive. And I think the only one that wasn't covered was, I did, I did ask if the project architect is here, so if you have color rendering or some material samples, I think that would be something the commission would typically expect to see as part of the presentation, so if you have those available, I think that would be valuable for this to work, your review and consideration, if you discuss with us.
Excuse me, where, you've mentioned a couple times on running the packet, this encroachment on some of the lawn.
Yeah.
Where, Amy, could you zoom in on the map up there, I think I have the same slide you have up on my laptop, which?
I have to apologize, we're having issues with the live stream, so having to deal with IT on the public side, I apologize.
See, if it's the bottom right corner of this drawing, if you've got it, and if you look at the, the rear of the site, there's two spots, one on the east side, one on the west side, so the east side is kind of in the middle of the property, you can see how the black line crosses over onto the curb, like on the, on the right side of the screen, in the middle of the property, by the armpit spaces.
Yep.
Which, again, hitting a curb is probably where we found it, because it's been really resulted damage, the one that really caught my eyes, if you look at the bottom, sort of.
What, what page of the packet are you showing right there? One eighty-one?
Yes, it's one eighty-one, sorry.
So if you look at that lower left, sort of the, the back corner of the property there, you can see that the dark black line really does go over the curb line, there's actually, you know, potential near that, any plantings might get damaged, or it could just cross over the lawn and it really starts to tear that, that one up, but again, if they've got a correction to that, I think we can address that, the condition, and that would be a revised drawing, if you can.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. So I have, Mr. Chair, but obviously if there are more questions, I'm happy to.
All right, any questions at this point for Brian? All right, Shelby, you're up.
So, the commissioner did a good job addressing any concerns I had in my first letter, so the comments I have tonight are really just for reference, I want to say the water reservoir is a little bit hot, and that's where we have the water ban and, and standards for the construction plans, that'll be for legal permitting, and then on traffic roadways, I just want to mention that we did have our traffic engineer review the traffic plan, that was done per standard practices, and we had no concern with that study, and then, like Scott mentioned, any recommendations in the study, now finding the site, they address on this thing, and then, last day I just mentioned the cross access, and having that be, that official just access to the site, and yeah. So, I just wanted to mention, I think, I agree that when I was here, it is almost that cross access would benefit the person, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Shelby. The Brighton area fire authority indicates that you guys have everything taken care of, so that's good, submitted the recent submittal, addresses all previous fire-related comments, no further comments, thank you for that. Any questions from the commission up front, so what's happened so far?
I have a handful of questions.
Go for it. Go ahead.
Yeah, to the petitioner, first off, thank you, it's a really well-done package that we received tonight, very thorough, so thank you for doing that, and I want to give you kudos, you've given us a lot to chew on tonight. I didn't notice a sidewalk connection between building two, the Goodwill, and the two buildings up front, or then the sidewalk along Grand River, is there an opportunity that you see to be able to do that?
Really what we need to do is dedicate, like the, if you're looking at, say, the Goodwill side where that drop-off lane is, we've got that, of aligned landscape islands there, that would at least get you up to the dumpster pad, which maybe not be the best, best approach for somebody coming up, but.
Is there any opportunity in the interior there, I know you have the bio-retention area, right, but as you move kind of east in that area, it's more upland, is there an opportunity at all to put a cross connection sidewalk, here's where I'm nervous about, there's not so much sidewalk connection to the road, I think people can figure that out, what I'm worried most about is the occasional overflow between the parking lots, and so very busy moments for Goodwill, maybe they have a big sale, and they actually need some of the parking in front of them, or vice versa, and so offering a short, small connection between those, I think could be beneficial.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to study what, what the most appropriate route would be here's.
Okay.
There may be something achievable, you know, maybe not running all the way from building to building, but certainly connecting the two main parking areas, to make you bridge that bioswale gap at least, we do have a sidewalk right at the beginning of the drive-through lane, that would, that's serving the purpose of, though, you know, that bank of, whatever it's fourteen or so parking spaces down there, access to the building, so if we were able to bridge that bioswale gap, again, just to get somebody to that parking lot, not having to walk all the way around it, that would certainly be achievable, but to have a continuous sidewalk from building to building would certainly be a real challenge, I think.
Yeah, okay, I think it's something to explore. Talk to me about the anticipated drive-through use on the east side of retail one, how intense of a drive-through use are you for shadowing?
So typically when you see these multi-tenant spaces, these are gonna be your, your more modern uses, so that's the intensity, you're talking Qdoba's or Chipotle's or, but those type of things, right, you're not gonna see something heavier like a McDonald's, they always require standbowl.
Yeah.
So, maybe it ends up being coffee use, so, so it's a more modern, a little bit, a little bit lower than what you would typically refer to as, or mines typically think of as.
Yeah. Real quick then to Brian, I know one of the upgrades to the drive-through requirements is an escape lane, there is an escape lane up until car four, does this meet that future requirement that we hope to pass?
So I believe we also wrote in discretion, have that too, so I would say if it doesn't, is the full escape lane, we're gonna call it partial, but then, the commission does have the ability to modify that requirement as well. And just to add a little more conversation to it, you know, whenever we do see requirements of bypass lanes, it's always finding the balance, in this case, we always want to make sure we provide that bypass lane up to the point where somebody orders, theoretically when somebody orders, they're more inclined to stay, so we do have it up to the order limit.
Staying with the theme of stack, notations of cars stacking in that, going off of my significant experience at the Salvation Army, that can be pretty large at times, and of course be slower than even food service, talk to me about that, how can traffic patterns and traffic flow through the site be efficient with what we have here this evening?
Yeah, so I think a couple things, number one, the drop-off lane is too wide, and it's, it's called a more dedicated drop-off maybe than, than the counterpart that's also in town, additionally, the location of that drop-off lane relative to the site entrance is the exact opposite corner, right, so when you look at the main circulation pattern of the site, the least used site, or the least used circulation route would be that far east drive which runs north-south, okay, so if you're going to the bank, obviously you wouldn't get to hide in that drive, if you're utilizing that, the four tenant spaces up on that front building, you're, the only reason you're using that route is if you run through that frontage parking, and they're all occupied, and you have to circle on the east side of the building, and then you're circling right behind that four-tenant building, so really when it comes down to it, the only people other than, you know, deliveries or refuse that are getting to that point in that far southeast corner of the site would be people dropping off, so I don't believe there's actually an ordinance requirement, but I also understand we don't want to have a site that's, you know, that doesn't work for anybody, right, so when you look at it, it is an extra wide aisle as well, it's not just twenty-six feet wide on the east side of Goodwill, part of the business for additional truck movements for that being the circulation pattern, so, you know, I believe the fact that it's wider, the fact that you have two, you know, double Y drop-off lane there, and the fact that it's kitty corner with the actual site approach, I think that sets it apart as different scenarios than maybe what we're used to experiencing.
Yep. Yeah, thanks for that. Here, here's what I see, here's my read on the situation, if it's found that the drop-off components of this site are more significant than expected, I believe that you have the pavement widths to be able to turn everything on the east, west, and south side of building two into a one-way traffic pattern if necessary, in a counterclockwise direction. I know that's not ideal for you, and it actually screws up the loading dock configuration, but I do think that that option exists, and again, I'm going off of seeing what happens at Salvation Army, part of it's on their own self-dealing, because they don't always have that open, but, you know, clearly people like to drop off stuff in this community, and so I would anticipate for this use, that that would be.
Similar.
Similar, yeah, or maybe they help, maybe both benefit from this, frankly, but it's just, it's not shown right now, and it strikes me that building two could have more stacking at times than that drive-through in front.
And another, another option also, ultimately, if it has proven that it's a consistent issue, I think with a couple of very simple onsite signage.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody's gonna be coming in and probably heading on the west side of the credit union to head south, and a simple sign right there on the west side of, of that second tenant space that indicates, hey, you know, that drop-off lane comes from the back of the building first, now all of a sudden we have a min-stacking rather than a back of the building instead of modifying circulation patterns with long lanes, et cetera, so.
Yeah, from a usability standpoint, I would count on that from day one, for sure, I think that's the minimum baseline for that drop-off. I know we require a dumpster for every building, I don't know how much a credit union needs in regards to a dumpster, but I definitely don't love the location of it, and I know that there's not a lot of options, so I acknowledge that, but to the point that you just made, a majority of the traffic, and for, I love the relocation of this entry, by the way, it makes our community safer, so thank you for that, but a majority of that traffic is gonna go along that western side of the property, and just as they get past the credit union, they will see a dumpster kind of facing directly them, my question is, do we have to have it, does the use necessitate it, can they use the dumpster behind retail one and share that, is there an opportunity for sharing that, and thus removing a potential eyesore that people would see as kind of early on in coming through a building or a site?
I think you'd have to relocate the retail one as well, because it's, that's a long way, that's a long way to walk for a bag of trash.
Well, but it's also for a restaurant, two restaurants, and whatever on the internal side there.
Yeah, that one might be full.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with your point, you're gonna drive in and.
Yeah.
See a dumpster.
Do you have decorative fencing, just to close off the dumpster, wood, wood fencing or woven fiber through the chain link?
Well, that is, that is requirement of ordinance, so that is a part of it already, the operations though, as we know, you know, you have different managers, different shifts, people are better and worse.
Rotate it?
Doing it.
Rotate it clockwise thirty degrees or forty-five degrees?
Yeah, is there opportunity for anything like that, rotating it so that people coming on that west side have a, I know you have some truck turning things to consider.
Yeah, thirty degrees would be difficult, just eyeballing it.
Yeah.
We could, we could get a little bit more, I mean typically you need about fifty-five or sixty feet of run-up space.
Yep.
With today's trucks, so.
Yeah.
We'll optimize it.
Okay.
I, I, again, I can't tell you how much that actually will do, I think there's a little bit of room to twist it, not much.
Talk to me about the RV spaces, is that a requirement of ours now? Okay, yeah, because that was part of Panda's deal too, right, yeah?
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, just jumping real quickly too, so I, I want to just take one step back to the dumpster, so, I mean technically if the tenant does not necessitate, it's always receptive, they don't have to have one, what we have are regulations when they are provided.
Yeah.
Obviously they'll have to come up with something operationally to address that, because there will be, I mean, a credit union probably doesn't generate a ton of trash, but whatever they do, they will have, they will have to address, but whether that's, you know, it's minimal that a manager can take it home, or if it's one bag a week.
Take one for the team. That's where I want my.
If it's a bag a week and they can utilize something else on site, I, I guess my, my point was that, there is no hard fashion rule that every use has to have a dedicated dumpster, but if you have one, you have to make location and design standards.
Is there an opportunity at the southeast corner of that credit union, of the building itself, for a pole cart corral, you put two or three pole carts, I imagine their trash is largely paper and recyclables, and, and some employees' lunches at times, so that may not, you know, be a decision you guys can make tonight, but I appreciate if you guys talk to that potential operator and see if that was a chance to do that, because removing that dumpster, I think helps beautify your site quite a bit, frankly saves you money, and I think it just would make for a better all-around facility, if it's needed, then totally understand, I would ask that you look at it, see if there's an opportunity to twist it or something, as Bill mentioned. The building elevations, are we able to show, we haven't shown those yet.
As soon as I can.
All right, gotcha.
Sorry, sorry.
We have been to packet.
Yep, it's up now. Overall, nice facilities, thank you guys for, for giving us a good product, and I know it does meet our requirements, right, for materials?
It does.
So, one thing here, in my opinion, the blue awning is obviously Goodwill's blue, totally understand where they would request it, personally I'm not in favor of it, because I want to make sure that.
My trouble.
That this facility is timeless if Goodwill's not there anymore, right, and so with that said, I would prefer if it kind of matched into some of the grays and other things that you saw there, and, and wasn't the blue, just those canopies and all that you see there, obviously the sign is their sign and all that works, but my opinion is that that blue color, if it was toned down, muted, would give, be more consistent with the rest of the site, and then give as well a little peace of mind that if that use ever changed, that you wouldn't have to tear that out and change it too, so. Any thoughts about that?
That would, I'll chime in first, that would certainly be a deal, when you look at that whole corridor, even starting with Speedway, and then Harbor Freight, and Red Olive, you know, White Castle, all of those, all the way to the corner, whether it be the actual awning, which now would be pretty similar workplace, or an actual element like the Speedway, you know, the canopy perimeter, or Harbor Freight has a brick belt, probably just painted on that, but, and then Culvers and White Castle both have blue in particular packages, and then you look at like Clear University and Bell Tire, and then the roofs, the sheet, you know, the metal roofs are blue and, blue and teal on those, so I think there's, there's color elements on essentially every building on, at least on the south side of Grand River that I can picture, so I think any, any user that comes in, they're gonna, the expectation is they're gonna have to do something, they're gonna be doing interior work to match their needs, and hopefully minor exterior work, if they want to.
They want to paint the outside, you know.
Yeah, I thought you didn't go out much. I know.
So I had to close my eyes and drive it, so.
Yep, no, you, for sure you are right in that, one person up here, offering my opinion, and it's a bit subjective when it comes to color, totally, you know, confess that, in my opinion, something that's more muted, I would ask for a consideration of that, but also would, you know, seek input from the rest of the planning commission and others.
And I think that's all we can guarantee, I mean, we can talk to Goodwill, to Goodwill's, they always have a blue band, it's, it's their thing obviously, so we can ask.
Is that, are those something, I think the, the conversation was going, are those things that can be easily repainted or just taken down with, and replaced with yellow for the next owner, or just?
I would assume they can be painted, it's metal.
There's general tenant improvements that are in any kind of lease, or that's the thing that's signed, and that can be all part of it, so, I, I personally think, I mean, it, it's blue, you know, it's not like they're, it's bright red, or it's, it's, you know, something that's very intrusive, intrusive, and, you know, like you say, if, if Goodwill goes away, somebody else comes in, they got their number, their colors, and they're gonna, it's gonna be part of their lease to do whatever the tenant improvements are, so, you have a question?
I have one last thing.
Go for it.
Uh, cross-access, wanna, I agree, it's absolutely ideal to have that cross-access, and thinking about the potential for the amount of traffic that comes in and out of this new site, I find it to be. Um, I find it to be next to critical, uh, for your function as well. Um, so, refresh my memory on what you said. Um, you've not yet approached Speedway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, there was in the nineties when that was approved, it appeared as though that was putting that in, that there was something in place. Don't know whether or not that easement was accorded, but regardless, the site plan had it in place.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't remember what's in my file on that, I think I pulled it up.
Yeah, that's what I saw in the construction plan, again, there was not a live or page associated with it that I could see in that plan.
Okay.
I, I don't have confirmation that it's reported.
And I will double check to see if we just have them signing an affidavit saying that when the time comes, they will. Um, I'll have to do some research on that.
Because that cross access for me, again, one person here. Um, does make such a significant, uh, change and improvement to the general traffic circulations of here. Um, I would be in favor of conditioning approval upon receipt of that reciprocal cross access agreement. And if it wasn't received, that they'd have to come back to this commission for reconsideration of that.
Um, reconsider.
Reconsideration of the old Ross A plan, that it, like.
So what would be your plan B?
Plan B, they'd have to come back so that we'd have to relook at this and understand.
Their, their plan A currently.
Right now, shows that there.
Show, shows it there or not there?
It shows the cross access thing.
You show it gave up to the, at the very least the property line with, oh, positive conversation.
So that's, so that, that, that is, I know this is challenging cuz you're, we're talking about another person's property that's probably not in the room. Um, so putting it up to that point doesn't create the benefit today though, or from the start. And that is a concern of mine. Um. Because would there be any new considerations for the entry and exit if that wasn't a part of? If that wasn't a part of the site plan?
Uh, I would say plan B would look identical. We would still, whether we actually stub it or just, you know, round the curve there, um, and have that provision so it's open. You know, not block it off with extra parking spaces or anything and have it open in hopes that, you know, maybe five, ten, fifteen years that. Those conversations can be reopened and that connection you made. Um, I don't think there's any layout changes, buildings certainly, I don't think we can relocate it anywhere. I still think you want the credit union up near the entrance since it's the, the lower volume use, uh, so.
Did the traffic im-
It's beneficial for everybody that, that's it, so.
Did the traffic impact study, um, assume the cross access is in place?
Yeah, I believe it, in case of that, it is to be there, yes.
Okay. All right.
Have to check to see what type of.
So it would require a change to the traffic impact study if we were to consider option B?
Yeah.
What, what is the, so I see the sidewalk running along here. And then I see where you're, you're trunking into the Speedway property line right here. Um, and that sidewalk ones runs right along there. What, what is the, what is the benefit to traffic flow if the, if Speedway agreed to, to run a connector, rode up to yours? Uh, how does that, that, cuz what, and, and maybe, maybe I'm thinking that wrong, but I, that, that, that Speedway is my gas station. I live very close to it.
I can make it simple, left turn light. Traffic light, you have access now through that Speedway to the traffic light between Speedway and Harbor Freight. So if that cross access is there, you now have access to a dedicated left turn light out onto Grand River.
Instead of coming back into, this is a single entrance exit, so you don't think people are just gonna circumvent?
I, I think they're gonna do both, but my point is it creates a blow off valve there and it gives you another option.
Okay. Because to get into Speedway, that, that's Speedway's one in, then you go to the other side of the store and that's the one out. You know, with the traffic control. And I'm just wondering if, you know, if somebody's coming east on that added lane right there. Everybody's coming in from Grand River to get to Speedway, it's gonna be like, look to the left, look to the right, look to the left again, cross. You know, I don't, I don't know if that's gonna be a snag or not, I don't know how many people are gonna use that right there. I, I'm asking mostly because I don't know, right, and I don't, I don't know how the, the benefit is to the traffic by having that there. But your point is now I don't have to double back and go out the same way I came in. Okay.
It gives an option, the other way doesn't even give you another option.
No, no, you're in and you're out in the same spot.
And you can't go behind the properties, right?
Right, you're not connecting to Cleary or anything back there.
Okay.
What, what would, uh, plan B resumetal look like though, other than revising the traffic study? Which we could probably provide an alternate even for the township board. Um, cuz ultimately, there, there's two parties involved, right, you know, one of which is not in our control, uh, at all to an extent. And, uh, you know, we, we have provided access to the site. Um, we're still gonna be working through M dot to meet that requirement. Again, it doesn't change the layout, the function, the use, uh, of the site, maybe it changes some numbers on the traffic study.
Well, I don't, I don't think we're considering plan B tonight, cuz that's not the plans we have and it's not the information on the traffic impact site. So I think the consideration tonight is only plan A. If you can't make plan A come to fruition, then that changes the site plan to a point where it either needs A administrative approval for that change. Or B, uh, come back before here. I don't, not saying it's a brandy submittal, would be a, uh, update or modification to the existing submittal. But what we have in front of us includes that cross access and a traffic impact study that supports that. So that is our consideration this evening.
He handled that a little bit with the, the idea that that could be taken care of because it's only one thing in the traffic study. Um, I don't know, I, 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 I'm looking at plan B because it's, either way, it's gonna be built the same way. Because we've got other cross easement properties in the township that don't meet it with a cross, a cross easement. They've got a paved little, you know, Meyer is a good example, except for it drops off about five or ten feet, but, um. Do we ha- do we not have enough tonight to look at this and say, um, okay, we're looking at plan B. If they can get the cross easement, that's even better. Um. We can, I mean, can we, can, there, there is some conditions here with the cross easement. Uh, there was, uh, conditions that we're gonna put on it for the, the drive through. Uh, or do we wanna address all that or, or see if we can get the cross easement before we do anything?
Well, can I speak?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Rock, uh, in a, basically, um, pinpointed a, a few of my concerns with this. Property and, and development with multiple buildings. Um, he brought up a, a one-way traffic flow, which I thought would, um, be advantageous. Because having just reviewed a similar property, uh, with two-way around the building. It was, um, it was, it was a project really to, to look at that and a safety concern. So I have some safety concerns with two-way all the way around this, in between the buildings. You have a drive-through where, um, you're coming into, from the, the moved, um, entry and exit area. Which, thank you, that's beautiful because I'm tired of hearing all the traffic accidents that we're having in Livingston County lately, so that will be beneficial. But I see two-way traffic in every area between the buildings and the front of the buildings, behind the buildings. Um, on the side of the buildings, semis are coming in, you're having to worry about which way do I go? Where are the signs that are directing you, where to go? And now you have a drive-through on the east end where we just reviewed, um. For a, another project in the area, they needed, um, additional, um, overflow area. To, to actually to put another, um, order area in because they had so much time to be able to commit to their people driving through. That they had to, such a wait time, they had to have another, they asked for a variance to have another, um, menu board. To be able to, um, service their peoples because they're not getting serviced in time, so now you've got people waiting. So I, I envision people ordering, waiting, coming around the front, coming around the side. You've got traffic coming one, two, three different ways there, um, where you're gonna have a drive-through. Um, and to me, that's, that's a big safety concern with all that going on.
It would have to be well signed so that people know if there's a one-way.
I think this comes back to, I mean, we've been having a lot of discussion around drive-throughs lately. Um, but what is the intensity, style of this drive-through? Um, to your point, like McDonald's wouldn't even want this, um, or anything of that intensity. But also, like, right now, there's nothing that supports any limiters of intensity for us on our end. Uh, so, um, you know, in front, yeah, there's a big difference between, uh. The line at Scooters versus the line at Starbucks in Brighton, right? So, that's, on our end, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to gauge, uh, what that's gonna be, but, uh.
I think you made, that's a great, that's a great point, the two you've made, you know, uh, I'm looking at this exit for the drive-through. Once you pick up your burgers or whatever it is, you, the first lane is gonna be oncoming. To that, that's.
Yep.
I can appreciate that comment you made, that's a good observation.
Pretty common though in these sites. Do a lot of Mary's Starbucks, it's, it's, it's pretty standard.
But you've also got probably one of the busiest gas stations in Livingston County right next door, I, I was in there today, it was crazy. It's crazy every time you go and by adding another through lane where you're, now you've got a drive-through coming right next to it. And if you have to pull over to get, wait for your delivery, you've got extra people parking, then they gotta leave and then they, they just. It's, it's a, safety is a, the traffic is, is a huge concern for me.
Does the ordinances though permit two-way traffic like this? Okay.
I'm, I'm personally okay with the two-way traffic thing, that's not an issue for me. And I can envision, uh, I think what this ends up being. I just don't know how to put it in as a, as a. Statement within our, within our approval, which would make it feel, I don't know if we can. Um, but, yeah, I, to your point, Mary Ann, like. The intensity of that drive-through plays a huge difference in, in how this ends up working.
All right, anybody else got any discussion?
I, I have a few questions. Um, sorry, did you, how were you overstocked on your parking spaces? You have so many required and you have so many open.
I think required was somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty. Well, let's see, um, required is a hundred and fifty-one and we're at a hundred and seventy-two. Twenty, twenty-seven plus.
Um, the reason I ask that is you look like you've got some good landscaping around here, around the islands, around the perimeters and everything. And I don't know how tight you have to hold to, hold on to those other twenty-plus parking spots. Uh, if, if you could do without so many parking spots and still meet your goal right there. Is there a way that we could increase the landscaping, reduce the amount of concrete here and replace it with something more pervious?
Uh, the best, the best option for that is if you look on the west side of the bio squall.
Yep.
There's, I don't know, seven or eight parking spaces right there, it looks like.
Yep.
Uh, we can always show that as, uh, deferred parking. So we have, and for, that would just mean that we have space allocated for it if, if we need it.
If you had to dig it up.
We would still meet ordinance by not exceeding a certain amount, um, but that, those are the least, uh, ideal spaces for, for any of the three users. So that, I mean, those, I mean, that four, eight spaces right there, that would get us, so we're only in excess of about ten or so, thirteen. So that would be an opportunity, but I would still encourage it just to, to have that shown as a preferred space allocation in instances of. This Goodwill's operation has, you know, that, that day where everybody shows up, that, you know, if that's something that's, that becomes an issue, then. Be more stock.
Yeah, I, I would be all about trying to preserve this, cuz there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of trees and everything, it's getting tore up for that Goodwill. Building back there, uh, but, you know, every square foot that we could save or keep green, uh, I would, I would support that a hundred percent. Um. There are over a hundred and fifty pages of the packet tonight is regarding traffic studies. And we've got a lot of E's and F's, the reds and yellows and oranges on these charts right here. One of the first things that somebody had mentioned was we would optimize the traffic flow at Latson and Grand River. And, uh, me being an engineer, I gotta ask why hasn't it already been optimized?
Four letters, N D O T.
Okay, I, I just don't, and this, this doesn't seem to be the be all, end all with a lot of traffic. But it's, to, to me, I mean, a hundred and fifty-some pages of traffic analysis is a red flag to me. That means someone's putting a lot of brain power behind trying to figure out how to make this work.
Of the hundred and fifty, probably a hundred, a hundred twenty of them are just data that, I'm guessing nobody even looks at.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's just the raw data output from studies, so really the first probably thirty pages is the summary of, of that. So, if it's not looked at on a council level, we can, we can not include it, but simply that's just a raw data.
So, the, the, the summary, it, it, and it was, the summary was on several different pages. Here's the summary of our find, here's the summary of our findings, so, um. The summary of our findings is the traffic study did include seven different developments. Uh, it included the lat, the big Latin P U D, that's in the news, it includes a couple different other developments in here. Um, I don't know how far away you have to grab population to include in a traffic study. Does this, does this have to include the traffic that's gonna be generated by the two hundred and fourteen or two hundred and four apartments here at Door and Grand River? Does it have to include that?
No, it wouldn't include that, but it would include, say, residential developments, um, further north on Latson. Once you head towards a fifty-nine, it's anticipated that those residential would be heading towards the highway and going through that intersection. Doesn't impact our development, but what, the tipi- the typical protocols, a traffic consultant will, uh, call M dot. In this case, or the road commission in other cases, and, uh, have a conversation. Ultimately, M dot will lay the groundwork of what, what intersection they want studied, uh, as a part of traffic study. So, in this case, M dot indicated that that's, that's the extent we wanted to go all the way over to that last, um, intersection.
And there is no, there's no plans, I, I didn't see it anywhere in the packet, but this, the entranceway to the new development and across the street, they're all lined up right there. There's gonna be no traffic control device there at this point. Cuz there's, there's one right there by the carpet mill right there at Grand Oaks, and then there's one right there at the exit of the, that would be like bingo, bingo, bingo.
Right.
And you, I don't think you'd never go anywhere. Um. I think, I think that's about my, my questions and comments would be try to preserve as much landscaping as we can. Um. And, and I think I remember that in the packet, it said this development at face value will not detrimentally impact the traffic flow. If you're an E and an F, you're still gonna be at an E and an F. And it did include Hobby Lobby, I think, right, that was called the, okay.
Right across the street. All right, is there anything else from, uh, Commission at this point?
I had one other question. Um, storm water management. Uh. Looks like bio retention in the middle, which is great, that then flows into a sedimentation for bay in the back, then into a detention pond. It looks like the outlet control structure then redirects, uh, that flow back to the M dot storm sewer in front. Um, the overflow spillway then is to the southwest, right at the southwest corner.
Correct.
Um, where would that spill into? And here's my, here's my leading question, when I look at their photo, that's like the Cleary University Stadium, so, um, yeah.
So, uh, currently there's two basins on site.
Okay.
Right now, uh, one is up near the northwest corner, it's a long linear basin behind the building. Uh, that has a, an existing outlet to the, there's a manhole right, in the right way. And then it heads, uh, westerly in front of the carpet store and then turns the corner and it cuts down, uh, Grand Oaks, Grand Oaks, uh, Drive. There is an existing basin a- at the back of the site on the southwest corner. Um, I believe there's actually even an outlet pipe for that. Um, I believe there's actually even an outlet pipe for that. Yeah, so on page four of the set of plans, there's an outlet pipe for that pond that actually directs it to the southwest property corner essentially. And from there, it runs across, uh, the, what's currently open field, uh, west of, uh, Cleary University. So, um, in this particular instance, ideally, um, detention, just because we have that positive out, we can, we can avoid any type of overflow, but.
So, it's an existing condition and the overflow, okay.
Occurring from a existing basin.
So, you're not creating a new trespass of stormwater. Perfect.
Um, I s, I have a question, I note, I noticed that there's a monument sign that is, um, proposed to go, um, inside.
It's very obvious.
Yes, yes. And Amy, my, I guess my question, I just had the ordinance open to the sign standards, um, regarding directionals, signs, does each building have to comply singly, or how does that, how does that work?
It's based off of the site, for directional signs, it's based off of your ingress and egress.
So, ingress and egress is one area, and there are three different buildings?
Correct, we do have incidental signs that was added to the sign ordinance, that we could maybe have those fall under. So, they would be, they would have to be the same setbacks as the principal buildings for the zoning district, and they could not exceed four feet, four square feet in size, and a maximum height of six feet.
That would be for each building, is that correct?
That would be for the property.
For the property?
Correct.
Okay, so as far as signs, like, for directionals, if you're coming in to go to a credit union? They have directionals that they can use?
They could use those as incidental informational signs, as long as they meet the setbacks. They would only be allowed for directional signs, it would be based off of the number of driveways that they have. So, for interior lot signs, they could use the informational signs.
All right.
As long as they meet the setbacks, which I think they would in that case.
Just wanna make sure that the applicant knows specifically how to do those, because, um, the sign ordinance is pretty particular, and we, you have multiple properties, you're, you're requesting on one piece of property, multiple buildings, and I would hate to see somebody think it was a hardship to come in and ask for something just because this is the way they presented it, the sign.
And you're referring to like wayfinding signs that they drive you, go this way.
Yeah, yeah, you, which way do I go when I enter, because there's two, two different ways I can go in, two different ways I can go to the left, where do I go to, go to Salvation Army?
We've had, had a couple of properties that Mr. Carwash, that had to go for variances for signs. So, we just wanna make sure that that's not an issue.
We did also just ask for more signs for that drop-off zone too.
What's that?
We asked for more signs for that drop-off zone also.
Yeah, it was like incidental parking lot signs.
Right.
But you shouldn't need signs to tell you where to go, because there's too many things going on with traffic, two, two different ways, different buildings, so. Um, that's the reason it might be good to say one way in, one way out.
But if it was one way in and out on this building, we'd have to go east to west for the trucks to unload.
Well, yeah.
And then it's kinda squeezed up that overflow drop-off parking.
I like everything on that Goodwill layout except for the direction of the truck well.
Right.
Because it does prevent the ability from making this one way in a counterclockwise direction.
Truck well just being positioned right next to the drop-off lane. Internally.
Internally, to get, to get to it, you have to come clockwise and then back into it. Um, where if that section around the Goodwill wanted to be one way, it would need to be counterclockwise.
Right.
Is there, is there a reason why, you can see what I'm pointing at, that the, that the truck well could be here, and this knockout part of the building could be here, could they flip?
Yeah, right, yeah, or even on the other side of the building.
Yeah, but this is a different tenant though, right?
Is it?
Yeah.
That, that's, yes. So, the, just, where the truck is dropping off internally in the building is adjacent to where people are dropping off, so. It's the stop here, the operation.
Inside.
In the building, it has their facility, their sorting facility, how, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
So, flipping it's not possible, but now you've just taken a big chunk of the, uh, sales floor, basically, in order to accomplish that. Their loading areas are spread out.
Right, okay, thank you.
Uh, those loading times, like, can they be restricted at all, as in during non-open hours?
As far as the truck pace?
Yeah, is there any options to make this a count, counterclockwise traffic circulation pattern to Tim's point? And still allow for this configuration of the building, and just limit when that truck, have the truck go the wrong way when it's not in service?
I don't know, um, as far as Goodwill's operation, I, I have to believe those are used throughout the day, to queue trucks coming and going for pickups and this and that. The other, I'm sure are used, you know, during business hours.
That's three lanes behind that building, right, if you take the, the, it's two lanes, two-way, plus the, the parking lane for the truck.
Talking behind, uh, behind the building? Yeah, thirty feet wide at, at the pinch point.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, that's three lanes, that's enough to figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're thinking more of a, a dedicated drop-off lane that would come around, could use that third lane, I guess, to be counterclockwise, or if that really works, like.
I could be wrong, but the way this building is set up and the Goodwill space is set up, if you just flipped it, went from having the access on the, the east side to having that on the west side that they're talking about?
It affects their internal operation.
Right, but there, it doesn't, actually, because you just do exactly what you're doing now, but you do it backwards.
So, you would put.
I mean, it's.
Saying the whole building.
No, I'm saying this, this whole section right here gets flipped.
Oh, you would flip the drop-off to the, the west side?
Yeah.
Uh, no, that would create stacking frontwards and not backwards. Right?
What are we talking?
Well, yeah, 'cause it would be.
It would do the same thing, yeah.
But you wanted to go, you wanted to go counterclockwise.
Sort of memory.
You wanted to go counterclockwise.
So, a semi's, semi's coming up this way and going around this way?
Pull up to here and then straighten back.
Coming right up here by the drive-through, going right around here, or they're eating outside and going through this way, or this way?
All right.
It's a box truck, most likely.
It's got three lanes. It's got two lanes to maneuver and get over here, here now.
They do that anyways.
But, applicant.
All these businesses, these businesses are gonna do that anyways for product and all that, so. We got heavy parking that we require us, so, that's the case for every drive-through now for us.
Certainly behind a credit union, and really the only spaces that, aside from the, the credit union spaces, uh, right near the entrance, the only spaces that is crossing behind are the bank of fourteen spaces, which in all reality, those are gonna probably end up employee spaces behind the building. So, as far as the, the route of the truck, um, as it pertains to its impact on, on vehicles that are parked and giving any type of flow in that regard, I think it's gonna be very minimal. You know, I, I would agree, ideally, less zigzagging through the site would, would be nice, but I think the, the layout and trying to be consistent with, uh, Goodwill's internal operation, inside the, the corner of the, of the wall, what's happening in there and deviating, deviating from national grandness is a very difficult, very difficult thing. It may be can, but there's, there's other, other caveats that come into play. Is, is the conversation more so to be able to commit the whole site to a counterclockwise circulation? Or is the concern sim, simply that the truck has to navigate to, to hit the approach of that truck well as we show? Or both?
Here, here's where I'm at, you had mentioned that's thirty feet wide back there anyways. I anticipate that you're gonna have seasons and times when you need to have cones back there and help direct that drop-off tra, traffic. I just will anticipate, a majority of your time, you won't have to do that at all. Um, but with thirty feet, I feel like that will give you options for being able to do that. And when, if you happen to have a truck come through at an inopportune time, then for that moment in time, you'll figure it out, move those cones. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's a hindrance for a handful of people dropping off, but we have this condition now, um, and at the Salvation Army, and, um, this feels a little bit better to me than that, 'cause it feels like we have a wider amount of space to work with back behind this building than what I experienced at Salvation Army.
There you go.
And they actually have a truck well there too, which is actually indented in the building in a strange spot. Um, and I've never once had that truck interfere with what we're doing, so.
Yeah, and I think turning it, you, you put that semi in, in the drop-off area, 'cause he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to back in. Back by where the drop-off is, I think, I, I think it's far more logical where it's drawn out.
Yeah.
Just pulls up and then backs straight back.
And I don't think there's any, uh, reason to think that you're gonna go one way, um, because people are, there, there'd have to be so much signage to, encourage to, to do that. Uh, it just wouldn't be worth it. Uh, at, at this point, let me call to the public, so we have that done. I'd like to call to the public, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak about this case that we've been talking. I'll please step forward right now to the microphone and do so. All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the call to the public, bring it back up front for further discussion.
A little off-topic maybe, but I'm curious, why are so many credit unions getting built these days in our community, when banking's largely online? I mean, do you know?
I don't.
Okay.
He doesn't get out.
All I can say is what I read in Wall Street Journal, and that, that buildings are like the new thing for banks, it's coming back. Why, I don't really understand, that that was written up, not all that long ago.
Interesting.
I can see that.
How, uh, what, this other, this other restaurant on the, on the west side of this four-tenant, that's just gonna be a walk-in? It's not gonna have a drive-through or?
Correct.
Just walk in?
You know, whatever that's like.
Subway or something like that.
All right, so where does that leave us?
A mess.
I think we, we messed it up pretty good.
We know we want directionals.
Yeah, I, I don't think, you know, we, we, we've experimented a little bit with the.
Yeah, we did.
One-way traffic, and I don't think that that's something that's going to be viable, just because of the layout of the site.
With the exception of the drop-off.
Yeah. And they can direct that on a, a given time when they're, they're taking donations, I guess. The crossesment is still an issue.
To me, that's the big rock. It's still the cross-access.
If we don't, if we ignore the cross, uh, uh, access for a second, what else do we have?
I still personally have a concern with the drive-through window, the eating area outside the drive-through, and the traffic that comes.
Right there.
Both ways, not to mention, I think our drive-through business is really changing according to some of the businesses that have come through, right? They, there's an overflow they have to wait for, and they need extra parking, they can't get it right away, so.
Good point.
You got, you got more traffic sitting there, utilizing spaces, that's, that, that's the unknown as we have approached. But I, I don't like that end with outside seating, drive-through traffic, and.
Outside seating to me feels a, very reminiscent of the Big B, and no one sits outside there. 'Cause you feel like you're gonna get clipped by someone.
Well, and I also think a space of only twenty-one hundred square feet is not gonna get any large amount of traffic driving through there. It's gonna be a coffee shop or maybe a quick donor shop or something like that, you're just, it's not gonna get, I don't think it's gonna get the traffic.
It might be better for that patio area just to be landscaped.
Well, and to address one thing, I, I believe I heard, um, most of the places, you know, they either fence it, or some put a, you know, two-foot concrete wall around it, you know, as part of the prototype plan, so, I mean, they're, you're not just sitting there, you know, all of a sudden your elbow gets hit by a car, right? It's not, it's not like that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
That's good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, one, one other thing too, and I, I think I heard Mary Ann start to go down this path, but I think it will potentially be helpful for, for one of your concerns, which is the, the backup, there are also waiting spaces built in to park.
Right.
They would have, they do have at least three dedicated, not to mention the fact they do have access parking as well. So, I do think that they'll have the opportunity, a minimum, they have opportunity for the three that are required, that will allow them to move people through and not clog up that lane if something is delayed. So, that, I think that will, that maybe helps, I don't know whether it mitig, mitigates fully your concern, but I think it would certainly help. So, I just wanna make sure that you.
They could dedicate those four parking spots right in front by the seating area as, as drive-through waiting.
Yeah, yeah, directly.
Yeah, it says short-term waiting.
Which would make sense, just turn right around and probably wouldn't be that full for the people that are dining there, but, 'cause there's nowhere for them to go. They're gonna be everywhere, in everyone's way.
When will you be meeting with the fine people at Speedway?
We'll try to open the, the conversation this or next week. So, I'll, I'll pass along to the owner that that's been a fair bit of a conversation, I hope.
And to the petitioners, is there a anticipation that, um, you'll come in anticipating to construct and bear the burden of the cost of constructing all the way to Speedway? I don't have any relation with them, I just am curious because.
That's probably ultimately what Speedway would like.
Yeah. 'Cause we know the power pole's the big deal here.
Yeah, it's gonna be a large part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Those ten or twenty feet, I think, that'd be easy to, to commit to, but, uh, you know, the fact that it's there, this landscaping is impacted. It's definitely a, a little heavier conversation with, with Speedway. So, we'll just have to open that communication channel and also find out whether or not that easement was in fact recorded.
Mm-hmm.
Probably the first, first step for the conversation happens.
I will look and see what I can find in our records, I thought I might have sent it to you, but I might not have.
You, I believe you sent me the, uh, the Speedway plan.
But not any documentation.
That showed that easement picked it up.
Okay, I'll have to look and see if we have anything in writing from them. I don't usually do this, but can I voice the concern that I have? Um, just because I do go to that Speedway, and that is not a very wide spot.
No.
To do cross-access at all.
And it's not like it goes directly in, in a line, you're gonna have to drive around the pumps.
You get all of those people that park out there, especially the landscapers that are sitting there waiting to get to the diesel pumps, and they have their trailers on, and they're all parked there. And then you have other cars that are coming in to try to just get to the gas, they're not waiting for the diesel. That's just one of my, just.
Yeah, 'cause they, they do come in at the traffic light.
They do.
Yeah.
That's just one of my concerns.
Well, if they'd raise their prices, we'd be okay.
Plenty high already.
That makes sense.
But, yeah, but it is there though. And, you know, one of our goals in our drive-through ordinance too, is to, if at all possible, connect these, and, um.
Completely agree. It's just, how are we gonna train people?
And we know that gas stations can change, I mean, it's a Speedway today, but five years from now, maybe it's another gas station, and it's.
Correct.
That's why it's, and it, the whole, based off of what specific gas station is, can actually change how often people are there.
Just same thing with the drive, the drive-through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was just forcing my concern just because I was there today and I saw it, um, you know.
All right, so what do we want to do this evening?
It's this power pole right here.
Yeah.
That's a, that's an issue.
The easement that was picked, I believe, was pretty narrow, I think it was like twenty-eight feet or.
Let's see if that.
Twenty-eight foot wide, so there's not a lot of room to navigate.
No.
And, and the council was expecting a little bit, but, so.
Hey, I think we talked about that at the pre-application meeting, saying it's not that wide over there.
So, do we need to wait for the conversation with Speedway? You said that's the big rock that we have here.
That's my question, I don't know, I'm, I'm on the fence, I'm just being open, I don't know what to do, I don't have a good sense, I just.
Yeah, I think the crossesment is extremely narrow. Um, and I don't know what can be done with that, because if you bring it any further, what would be, what would that be, south?
Cause we could.
You're in the pa- pathway of the exit from the drive-through.
We could approve it as.
Alternative location would be to, on the south side of the dumpster for the drive-through building. If the grades work, and there's, there's some elevation change there, but.
It puts you smack dab into their building, right?
Puts you right into their building.
Yeah. There could be another option where you're kinda coming in at the back of what they do, but, um, that just doesn't seem like very wise either.
Alright, so. So, are we to consider the standalone as it is, assuming that there is no pass-through to Speedway? This is gonna be one entrance, same exit. Two-way traffic, three sixty.
Which is so, the so-called Plan B. I mean, we're, 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 we're looking at Plan B before Plan A.
So, the good news is that you've realigned that new entry.
Drive. Yeah.
To be directly across the street from what will be the Hobby Lobby entry.
Yeah.
Which then also creates greater distance between there and the traffic light, that's helpful too.
Mm-huh.
Um. And then on our end, like, we would request the easement from you, or you guys would just construct it to the property line, I guess is what you're saying.
If we think it's imminent, then yeah, constructing to the property line, if, if not, we would simply hold that space as a placeholder of one, one of the cars there.
Right.
To a power, to a power pole there, so we would simply just round the curve there, and when the time comes, curve comes out.
This, this does include the right-hand turn lane being added to get into this property, right?
This does, um, I don't know if we can.
I, I can see it here, but I mean, we talked about that earlier on, it was one of the, adding the lane is a permissible way to help mitigate the traffic issues.
Amy, when's the last time you heard from Speedway, cause they could use us some remodeling too.
Actually, I have a, I've been wanting to call, cause even the inside of the store is.
Oh. What, the parking lot's bad there too?
The parking lot's bad, yes, I actually wrote a note down that I wanna look at their plans. Um, and we're gonna have to send a letter to them.
Yeah. Here's the good news for our community, thinking about what's going on across the street, this site, I mean, the amount of investment coming in right now to this specific area of our community. Which has been the eyesore now for a good decade.
And a lot of comments.
Very happy to get rid of this.
Let's, let's. Yeah, it's a big deal, it really is, so I don't wanna like, all of our comments to like, feel like that overshadows, or I wanna make sure we're acknowledging how big a deal this is.
Alright, so if we dis- distance ourselves from the cross easement a little bit and say, what else is there that keeps us from approving this this evening, what do we have? Cause we're gonna, we're gonna end up with two-way traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Which is one of the things we talked about. We're going to be counterclockwise, and it's gonna work with the loading dock in the back. Um.
I would just ask them to consider looking at not needing a dumpster for the credit union. Small sidewalk to get across the landscaping between retail one and retail two.
So, we've got some exceptions and we've got some conditions.
Uh, yeah, and it's more like, kinda look at it more than like, actual conditions of, of.
And the other, the other item is that five hundred foot easement between drive-throughs or five hundred.
Waving that, yeah.
Uh, and working that into the equation. Uh, I, I guess that my point is I don't see anything else that keeps us from, uh, making a motion this evening for this. Does anyone agree with that?
I agree with approving it, but I don't know how to get everyone's caveats into it. You know, I'm, I'm fine with the internal sidewalk, I'm fine with the two-way traffic around it. And we're gonna prove it with the, I'm gonna do the, um, access road to the Speedway, but understanding that that's a what-if.
Yep. And any type of recovery of parking spots into landscaping or grass would be great. I mean, we, we mentioned eight here on the far west side, but you had twenty-something.
Take toward the.
Why not, why not go for fifteen or twenty?
Yeah, again, I would just voice that we, we certainly wanna keep those in base deferreds, if we have to come back to add ten or twenty spaces, simply because.
What does that mean deferred?
So, shows it on the plans as being, if they were to add them in the future, they could add them there, and they don't have to come in for just administrative approval on that.
But it would be, it would be first.
Placeholder, just a placeholder, and, and again, the big reason to have a little bit of excess, I, in an ideal scenario like this, is that we don't have every ten, though, right? We've got, we will know.
Right.
We've done the best we can, uh, Realtors looking at market analysis, you know, saying, we think this, or we're getting interest from this. So, we, we, we target the users that all of those direct to. Um, but hopefully, at the end of the day, um, something may be different. And if something has an increased parking, while we have access to tap into, um, and obviously we're capitalizing. So, if something has too much, so like, for a restaurant uses on the front building, they're always not practical from a parking perspective. So, um, so again, we're just trying to do our best to accommodate what the actual users will be once they're, they're done.
Alright, do we have everything in?
I'm right, I can make a motion.
I, I'm sorry, if you have a question, and I'm sorry, I was dealing with the computers, I don't know if this was brought up or not. I know you mentioned retaining walls.
Yeah.
And you're looking at it being four feet.
Yeah, I believe it was, uh, I believe it was four feet.
Do you know how far that is from the property line?
Uh, the base of the wall is two feet.
Okay.
I believe the order of the apartment is two feet from the property line.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Um, but it was two feet, cause then I went for now.
And that's on the west side?
It's on the west side, yeah.
How tall a retaining wall is that?
Four foot, one foot.
Four feet.
Four foot tall.
The max.
And that's next to the parking, is that gonna be the Livingston Concrete Lego ones?
Yeah, that's what we're, we're looking at right now.
Okay.
It might turn into something, it, it's gonna be a larger format, so it's gonna be probably at least eight-inch tall blocks.
Okay.
Um, when you look at the larger format blocks, you're looking at two blocks to three blocks high, which.
Yeah.
In, in the smaller application, they may not find it, they being the, uh, suppliers, it's not as efficient as larger scale walls. So, it, it's still appropriate to use a smaller, like Keystone, standard commercial block, you would see like eight-inch tall.
Mm-huh.
Uh, eighteen-inch wide or twelve-foot, twelve-foot wide, so.
Fence on top.
Uh, I believe we, I believe we do have a fence on top.
Okay.
And we also have plant in the whole, the whole length of it as well.
Okay, cool.
Alright. Mister Roach.
Mister Chair, I'm ready. Yeah, Mister Chair. Like to recommend to the Township Board, uh, approval of the special land use application for three six zero zero Grand River. Uh, this.
I'm sorry, can I just clarify?
Yep.
We wanna make it East Grand River. Cause it doesn't have East in there, and there is a thirty-six hundred Grand River on the other side of town. And I looked it up, so I think we.
Is it east or west?
It's east.
East.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I, that is, that's.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yep. Good catch, thirty-six hundred East Grand River. Uh, provided that this commission finds that the standards of section nineteen point oh-three are generally met. Specifically, the use conditions of section seven point oh-two. Uh, point oh-two, uh, are met to sa- to the satisfaction of this planning commission. Uh, Brian, remind me, seven point oh-two point oh-two is the drive-through ones, right? So, this is the five hundred foot?
Yes, so those would be the use conditions.
Perfect, and that this commission finds that the use, uh, is acceptable. Uh, and deviates from the five hundred foot minimum standard.
Distance.
As loca- distance as located to another drive-through use. Something like that, she's gonna make a sound.
Are we gonna leave the cross easement completely out of it?
Is that inaccurate?
We're gonna waive the five hundred.
What should, what do I need to say?
You can't waive the five hundred.
So, I, I think.
It's in there now. Seven point oh-two point oh-two is the five hundred foot.
It is a, it's a requirement.
Okay.
We can't deviate because on that.
Ah, 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 we don't have the authority to deviate. Ha, 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 okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Brian, I was like.
So, let me rephrase this. Um.
Ready, Patty?
All the way up till, uh, that the general conditions of section seven point oh-two point oh-two are met to this commission's satisfaction. And in. And in understanding, uh, that. That the new ordinance requirements for drive-throughs is passed prior to an issuance of a lane use permit. That allows for the deviation of the five hundred foot location standard.
There's more zoning variances.
How do you wanna say it, Amy?
I'm, I'm just worried because we gotta make sure that he meets the new cr- new criteria, because it was, that was not in place when this was reviewed. And it still has to get through Township Board. Um, and if it doesn't meet the new criteria that we're requiring in the zoning ordinance update, then they're gonna have to come back.
So, what are we looking at then? I mean, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but like, how? I can't even do.
Why, why don't we say, direct him to do a zoning variance unless.
Right.
Unless, unless he meets, meets current regulations, if they change the regulations, he doesn't have to go.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, you gotta go the other, you gotta go the other way.
Yeah, go, tell him to give the zoning variance.
That requires a zoning variance.
But if the rules change, he doesn't need the variance.
Yeah.
Patty?
Got it. So, I just wanna make sure that we have it in there clean and that it's known.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Clean enough? Alright. Got anything else to add to that?
Uh, can I, you know what, maybe you should say zoning ordinance at time of approval.
Yeah.
At.
Tell me what you wrote, tell me what you wrote.
She doesn't like that. Basically saying that they need a variance unless it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
But did, did we not hear that the new ordinance will allow the commission to deviate? So, it's not really like there's new conditions we have to meet, you can just deviate from the.
It's, I think it's.
There's more to it.
Yeah.
There's more.
Alright, are we satisfied with the language?
We just leave it at ordinance?
Yeah, that makes sense to me. Ordinance approval.
Is there anything else you need to?
Well, this is an ordinance approval.
Condition that to.
No, there.
The, if it, if it goes through review.
The ord- yes, of that, of section seven point, the updated seven point oh-two point oh-two approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that covers our special land use.
Does that cover us? Does everyone feel okay with that? Is there something to add or subtract?
I just wanna make sure we're stating that it's subject to the zoning board approval unless an ordinance.
Unless the ordinance.
Allows them to do it without CBA approval.
If the rules change.
That's it.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Is that the only thing?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, whoop. Discussion?
Is that all we have for that section?
That's all we have for that section, yes, sorry.
Sure.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing not passed unanimously. I thought you said it right in my ear, I'm sorry. You said nay, nay, there is a nay. Commissioner McCrory.
Um, alright. Get ready. Uh, recommend, uh, to the Township Board environmental impact assessment, dated three twenty-four twenty-five, estimated.
Second. Gotta be quick, man. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Hearing one.
Is there any?
Yeah. Alright, Mister Chair, like to recommend to the Township Board approval of the site plan dated three twenty-four twenty-five for thirty-six hundred East Grand River. Uh, with the conditions that the petitioner, uh, review the location of the dumpster located behind the credit union. Uh, that the petitioner review, uh, adding an additional means of pedestrian, uh, pathway between retail unit one and retail unit two.
Kind of maximize green space.
Yes, thank you, that the, um, petitioner review maximizing green space and, uh, defers the eight parking spaces on the west side of the bioswell. Um, anything for the cross access? Uh, yeah, um, before cross access, uh, adds, um. Signage for the, um, drop-off of donations. Donation drop-off signage as appropriate is added. Um, anything to add for the cross access or as-is is good?
We're approving it with the cross access then, so.
With the TIS, with the cross access then, yeah. Perfect, so I'm gonna leave that out.
Yeah.
What if the cross access does not happen?
Uh, does that, discussion real quick before we move on.
Yeah.
Does that, uh, change the site plan enough where it necessitates it getting kicked back to here just through our normal processes?
I think if the cross easement is granted, it just adds to what we have, otherwise we, we just describe what we've got without the eas- uh, easement right now.
I don't believe that it does, because they're, they're not counting that as a secondary ingress and egress on their plan.
Yeah.
They have the one.
It is identified in the TIS though.
Still has impact. To the site. I just wanna have some documentation in the minute, so if they sell, the owners sell, and Speedway, we have documentation on both ends.
Yeah.
That it would happen.
Alright, um, the condition that the cross access with the, um. Gas station to the east is preferred. Um. And, uh, any, uh, failure to provide that requires at minimum administrative approval of. Not allowing that. In other words. We can have discussion.
Please.
Yeah. You don't want that in your hands?
No.
Sully, okay.
No.
Comes back to this, comes back for a second.
So, comes back to the planning commission?
Comes back to the planning commission for review.
Yeah, I, I already have a.
So, everything, everything.
Everything else.
We have to lie in U T, in updated TIS that reflects the elimination for, you know, the, the cross traffic that was anticipated and reviewed and approved by touch tax internal traffic. Uh, person that reviewed it in the first place, would that be an option, so it's still administratively, but it's not, it's deferred to consultant that reviewed?
I don't think so.
I think we'd have to approve that.
I think we're approving, yeah. We're gonna approve it with the cross access, assuming that you're able to obtain that and get that.
And then we need to be updated.
And then any change to that needs to come back to this planning commission and Township Board.
Got all that, Patty?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Any other discussion?
So, I'm sorry. So, you said the cross access of the ga- to the gas station to the east is preferred, but then you just said.
I'm changing that whole thing.
You're changing that whole thing?
You're changing the whole thing, I wanna be more clear. Um.
That it's required.
Yeah, that what's reflected on there is required. Um, and it's also in the, it's part of the TIS. And if it's not provided or is found to have not, it can't be provided, then it needs to come back before this planning commission for a re-review.
But that should go quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just to.
Yep. It's the only way to do it.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Did you cover, address that already?
Um, no, I didn't, but we can put it in there.
Yeah.
That all signage on the property requires a separate sign permit.
Second.
You got. Got a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One nay. Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, thank you, guys. It's a great project, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. We're moving on. Public hearing number two, consideration of sketch plan for the proposed relocation of an existing standalone ATM. The drive-up lane located on thirty-five ninety-nine East Grand River Avenue, north side of Grand River Avenue, west of Latson Road. Request is petitioned by Symmetry Management.
Here.
State your name, no. Okay, did you get that, Patty? Get that, Patty?
Okay, so, um, little bit smaller item on, on this one, um, if you're familiar with the site, which I think everybody is, especially since the Hobby Lobby came through, uh, years ago, uh, there is an existing Chase ATM out on the site, um, in the parking lot. There's no, uh, dedicated drive aisle or, you know, parking, really all that's out there right now is an additional curb on the back side of the, uh, of the ATM and other, you know, the height bar, just to help guide, uh, users at this time. So, um, it's now known that there's a priority to be released, uh, by the, uh, user. So, in looking at, uh, the options on site, the proposed location is very similar, uh, to where it is. Uh, the map that's on, up on the screen right now, um, we've got a box around where we're proposing it. The existing location, just for reference, is, if you could see those two drive-through users, again, those are placeholders for right now. Uh, if you could move the cursor just to the left a little bit, right on the edge of the parking and the curb line there, about right there. That's about the existing location of, of the ATM as it sits today. Um, so what we're proposing is to add a dedicated, uh, drive-through lane, um, for this. It does have, uh, I believe, three stacking spaces, uh, so if there is a few people waiting there, they're not inhibiting flow that not backing up into the actual drive aisles, navigate through, uh, through the new parking lot configuration. Uh, as far as what it's going to look like, uh, it's proposed to essentially take a setup that's there right now and just drag it over. So there is a height bar, uh, that you will approach first, there's a light pole right in the middle, just to, to make it lighted, uh, for safety reasons. And then, of course, you have, uh, the, the awning there and, and the actual ATM machine underneath. Uh, it is, so in this particular case on the picture, um, again, it's in the middle of the parking lot, so it's just on a raised, um, concrete, you know, curb aisle in there. Uh, ours will be behind an actual, um, high-back curb. So, uh, with that being said, that's really all I need to talk about the layout. I've been looking at the comments, um, yeah, sorry to steal thunder, but, um, really, there's a couple items, uh, located on there. It looks like a discussion maybe on where this, uh, this drive-through lane is, is exiting onto. And into that, really, I would just simply indicate that, um, the number of users that, I think I've seen maybe ones that, a car is using it and a car waiting. That's just from my, again, I drive by it every day twice, so it's just in that stat shot in time, um, so I don't know if there's bigger backups than that. But, um, from my knowledge of this other isolated ATMs, uh, a good example would be the, I think it's a lake trust over in, on the south side of Grand River by Kroger and bushes. Uh, so very similar setup, uh, to that configuration. Again, I don't know if I've actually seen anybody at that one when I drive by it, but, so very few, uh, users stacking those. As far as exiting and the point of exit, um, in, in proximity to that, uh, that main drive aisle, that kind of crosses the site there. There's maybe a, a little bit of ability to gain an extra few feet, but, but not much. Um, so we don't, we really don't see much concern on that end. Um, and then really the other big thing was lighting, um, you know, the question of lighting and whether it's gonna be what's out there today. And to confirm, yeah, yes, we're going to propose relocating the light that's currently out there to light that area, um, for the safety. Again, that's more of a safety, um, safety concerning, so we need it lighted. Um, and then talking about the, the space allocation between, uh, the main drive aisle for the whole site, an actual drive-through lane. The question is what, what is that? So it is just gonna be, we'll call it green space, whether it's mulch, egg rock, et cetera. Um, and those who rest, maybe to have discussion about landscape of some kind and, um, you know, there, there's no issue to add some shrubs. It would be, it would be a spot to, to add a few shrubs and it'll help further to eliminate the space. And then the last comment, well, signage, really the only signage you typically see in this situation would be a, uh, do not enter or one way, do not enter, then be placed, um, right at that outlet point. So, I think that's, uh, that's all I have.
Alright, Brian, did he steal everything?
No, of course not. Even if, even if he did, I'd make stuff up. Thanks again, nice, um, again, thanks to the, I neglected to say this with the last case, but, uh, you know, Scott has been doing a really good job addressing our comments, both in plan view when we get to the second reviews, which you won't only see the first reviews, uh, as well from presentation. So, thank you for that. Um, so procedurally, this is a minor amendment to a, an approved use and site plan, so this is a part of just for sketch plan review. So, planning commission has approval authority over this, uh, and again, it's just a sketch plan, not a whole site plan. So, there is a, I'm just gonna, super nippy, there is a very minor increase in impervious surface from what was previously approved. I think it's probably negligible, but, uh, I'm gonna defer to Shelby in case she has to address anything as it relates to that. I did ask, only because we have a, we have a photograph, a photograph of the existing setup, the machine, the volors, the lighting, et cetera. I just wanted to make sure that for the commission's sake, uh, I wanted to confirm that what we see now is what it's going to look like as a result of this project, just because it's in photograph form and not in plan form, so I'm getting head nods, so I believe that's confirmed. I just wanted to make sure if there were differences, that we were able to discuss those, um, so I was, we're gonna get the same thing. And then Scott mentioned, I, I did bring up the, uh, again, this isn't really my, uh, my place, but a, a little bit of a concern as it relates to the proximity of that egress lane, uh, and where that will spit you out in relation to the site. So, we do have kind of the, the parallel service drive right there, and that's right at the main, one of the two main, uh, access points to, from Grand River for this property. So, again, not really my issue, but I wanted to bring it up at least for discussion, if commission had a concern or if Shelby saw a concern with, with vehicles exiting with the potential traffic that could be coming in, out, or across, uh, parallel to Grand River. I just wanted to make sure that we talked about it, if there was a better orientation, something that was at least discussed. Uh, I'm not saying it is an issue, it's just something that I wanted to point out for discussion purposes. So, um, we can probably come back to that one if that's okay, Mr. Chair, I just wanna knock the rest of these out.
Okay.
So, again, I'll look for Shelby's input on that, uh, and actually, I think that's it, I think, uh, Scott addressed everything else. So, lighting is the same, um, they are gonna provide, if you look at the area between the main drive aisle and the aisle for, uh, the ATM machine, just wanted to make sure that it's gonna be landscaped lawn, something, um, so we get a detail on that, and then signage is detract from it, so I think we're in good shape there.
Alright.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, Brian has not seen this, but I have received a request for a pre-application meeting, um, for a outlot to be on one of these par- parcels, and I wanted to ask Brian a question is would, if they create a new lot line for an outlot, would that have to meet setbacks from that lot line? Sorry, I was just thinking about it as well, I was looking at that. Cause the, the drawing I have, I believe, looks like the new outlot line goes right to that, almost up to there. Yeah, I don't think you're, yeah, I don't think you're on that, but believe it or not, you're not on that one. I'm, it was just a question, I was kind of
You're talking about like the lot line of where you'd put the
Where this new lot If they're gonna create two new outlots.
Right.
Are we gonna be creating property lines and are they gonna have to meet a setback from that?
So
So is the
So a new property line can't create an existing not conforming use because of the way it is. So, the orientation of that new lot line has to be such where it's offset, I assume this is an accessory use to a principal use. So what is that, it's only like five feet, right? That setback, or is it ten?
Yeah, I, I don't know if we would apply the RCD standard or if we would apply the, um, we would apply accessory structure standard.
I would probably try, I would do the accessory structure, so
If it's accessory structures, prob- I mean, it's, they could probably make it work, cause that should be less, I would think.
I think so too, I can look real quick. I'm sorry, it, I saw this, actually I looked at it today, and then it
So that square that's around the, uh,
That's just a blow up.
Is that
It's just to obtain your attention to where
That's not a property line.
There's no property lines, so, uh, are there any easements?
We show the full scale of, you know, the project at large, so you can see where this is fitting.
She's saying that there will be property lines that they're gonna propose here for these. This one here, this property line, and how close it is to that structure will either make that setback conforming or not.
Is this a question? The ATM's gonna be there first.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't the future development have to deal with the setback?
I, that, that's what I, I just wanna clarify, so that
Tell them to deal with it.
When that new person comes in, that it's on the record. It does say that non-residential districts, all detached accessory buildings shall meet the um, setback requirements for principal structures unless otherwise provided herein.
Which is what in this district for side?
RCD is gonna be eat it. Twenty feet.
Cool.
Well, have fun with designing boards.
Yep, good luck. It shows it on, I mean, they showed twenty feet on this little sketch, so.
I, I just remember the, the pre-application one that I have, looks like it goes right up to that, and that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
But that's
Ownership is who's giving the lease for this, uh, kiosk, right? Isn't the ownership of the, the property, the one providing the eas-
Symmetry, right?
So if that's the case, then they should be taking this into consideration already.
That's what I wanted to make sure that
Yep.
They knew.
Alright.
Sorry, Brian, I just wanted to ask that question.
No, it's fine, I mean, I just remembered, I mean, where it sits on the property now.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it actually is going farther west than where it's currently sitting, correct?
I just wanted to get it so I can make sure that it works, it doesn't hardly work all the
And Brian, what were you saying about landscaping?
Mm-hmm.
So if you, if you look at the, there's a, a little island created in between the drive aisle, um, and the drive aisle.
So how much
Oh, I see that, okay.
How much landscaping, because I think if we make a motion tonight, that it requires us to be directive in how much landscaping is there. So, would, like, three, uh, deciduous trees? Uh, what, like, what, what are we looking for landscaping-wise here? It's a decent-sized island, there are it is eighty feet long, basically. It's eighty feet long, right, eighty by ten or twelve?
It's probably upwards of fif- at least fifteen feet wide.
Do we have fifteen?
Do we like trees?
Yeah, I don't.
I do.
I mean, the, I mean, people
Who takes care of
People coming out of here, they just brought up cons- possible concerns with people coming out of here so tight to the entrance. I mean, could you, if we had, depending, like, maybe shrubs, but I mean, I'd be worried that it would block our sight.
I'd rather have trees over shrubs.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Cause shrubs are gonna block your sight in a car, and a shrub's gonna have a clear view of six feet or so.
Well, assuming they keep it trimmed, and they crown raise it.
But you can't trim a shrub down, up, so.
Oh, that's true, I agree.
Yeah.
We could do a deciduous and then low, like, low perils or a low
I see this as part of the entry profile into Hobby Lobby, more so than what we're considering tonight. And I think it's pretty critical to add some nice landscaping now. What we also could add is, not, is, uh, just day lilies and stuff. Something that's super low.
I just wanna make sure we don't block track, uh, sight from people coming out of Hobby Lobby, that's all.
Or coming out of the ATM.
Or coming out of Arby's. Is there gonna be a stop sign there?
Where's Arby's?
Arby's is over to the, that, that road comes right, Arby's comes right through there.
Do we really think that Chase is gonna send somebody over here and keep this stuff dying?
Is that gonna have a stop sign there? Right here. Cause this, you're also
What's in the Hobby Lobby site plan?
For what?
For that area, there's nothing in this.
There's nothing.
Because it was all, yeah.
You also have future development here that shows things coming right out of here, so they're probably gonna go down this way too.
See what we need, our, our bees.
That's great.
Is it gonna have a stop sign there?
I would like to see some clarification on landscaping that you would, if you're gonna require it, um, just because
Are we requiring, again, are we requiring the landscaping of the, the people leasing this property or the lessors who own it?
That was made in the application.
Yeah, who, who the applicant is.
The applicant's responsible.
It's the property owner.
Think about who's responsible for the landscaping. After you think Chase is gonna come out and, and landscape, or keep the landscaping around the kiosk.
That would be on the property owner.
It'd be a property owner.
Right, so the property owner should be the one that we're talking to about what's going on that island.
Right there.
The property owners here.
Okay, alright, that works then.
Alright, I'm gonna say three deciduous trees, um, and fifty day lilies. Just gonna design it.
Wanna put an Easter basket?
Orange or yellow?
Put a little, a mix, a spring mix.
You think you're joking, I'm not.
I'm not.
No, he's not.
What, you hate day li- day lilies? No, I said fifty. Five, zero. Yeah.
Around the perimeter, around the perimeter.
Just the whole thing be loaded up. Put no grass in there, no nothing, like, just literally all day lilies and mulch. That's a big area, it's eighty by twelve, it's thousand square feet. It's actually not that small.
Yeah, that's not a lot of day lilies.
Yeah, but day lilies bloom for how long?
Well, you, but you got the green, you got the, the leaves the rest of the time.
Do we need a plan, or are we just gonna give them an idea of what we want?
Fill in between where the trees are, to fill the space in between where the trees are?
Yeah, I was just thinking of something that was small.
Just one thing.
They need water.
What?
They need watered?
Well, they got other landscape islands out there that will need water, so.
Okay.
Thought you were asking for a fountain, I'm sorry.
Quite fun.
Directional fountain.
Yeah.
Alright, so
My guess, sorry to interrupt.
That's fine.
Again, I, I didn't review the Hobby Lobby plans or Grand River Plaza plans before. My guess is the island, uh, to the north of it, that runs, you know, north-south and parallels the state drive. My guess is that that just has trees, uh, you know, to leave space all the way up, so.
Do, do we wanna say landscaping consistent with what?
Yeah, with minimum of three deciduous trees. I think we have to get specific.
Yeah.
This does not go to board.
Huh?
This will not be going to the board.
Right, exactly, yeah. What is, is, Amy, do you have the ability to look at the landscape plan for those islands?
I'm pulling that up right now.
Thank you.
Did we get to Shelby?
I'm sorry.
Let's, let's, let's show Let's let Shelby talk.
Yeah, I didn't have any comments on this, I thought it was a great improvement to what's there now, um, staffing-wise. I guess I wouldn't know if there are more than three things because of the ATM. Um, but I've heard Scott, I mean, there is, there always empty, um. Um, purpose service-wise, when Grand River Plaza was designed, the recent, like, last year, they increased that pond by forty thousand cubic yards, I believe, or they will be as part of that project, and they didn't increase any impervious service on the site. So, um, I'm not really concerned with this being added. And, um, I guess when they did those two outlots, they had to look at, again, make sure like they're not adding more impervious service than what was originally planned for. But, um, with this added, I'm concerned.
There's no way they're adding more, cause it's overall pavement right now. Yeah.
Which, I, I believe, if memory serves me, we knew that there's gonna be something going in those outlets. You know, what that layout is, we don't know. So, uh, we either used, um, or assumed that same level of impervious that we depicted as in the drive-throughs or there's this possibility that we said, okay, eighty percent of that area, we'll assume is going to be impervious, so. And yes, we did add additional, uh, additional line to base it as excess, as a request from the tram commissioner.
And looking at the plans I've been making, an assumption about what, make sure, understand it correctly. Are the outlots, are you removing that pavement right now and just having it as grass until those get developed? So that what we're approving tonight, potentially as a sketch plan, does have green space next to it and all, not some old, ratty parking lot. Perfect, thank you.
This whole area?
Yeah, for now, until they come in with development.
Beautiful.
There's already interest, there's a rehab coming up on, on something going in there. So if the timing on that works out, then maybe they don't plan
Right, right.
If that works out.
But this is a throughway here, right, Ashville?
Yeah, that stays.
So shouldn't there, shouldn't there be a stop sign here?
So, uh, the Hobby Lobby plans had a, I believe there's a dedicated sheet for signage. It showed all the, the parking fire lane signs, other way timing signs, those that I have, which are probably by fire authority. Uh, I, I didn't re-study those plans, but if memory serves me, that would, probably be a location that stops, I believe, existed.
Okay.
Was that it? I'm sorry, I'm still trying to find those plans, was that approved, was Grand River Plaza approved after Arby's?
I think it was before.
Before.
I thought it was
I think it was after.
I thought it was after, cause she was trying to get
I thought it was after.
Cause we said Arby, we tried to get Arby's to negotiate with them.
He was trying to get parking there, yeah.
So Arby's was March, okay.
That's right. That's right.
Would you mind if I just ran and got the plans? It'd be a lot easier.
I, I, this is February twieth, I have them all.
Oh, February twieth? I was like, I have to see when I went to the board.
That would've been a first for me. I don't, I don't see like a second review of my files, but I would...
Okay. Let me see. And that was of twenty-four?
Hmm, correct.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Yeah, just like the landscape, that particular perils, and I don't see where that is a grass on February twenty. Did you say February twentieth was the, that would've been the second? Original site plan review.
So, that would've been... And, ah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think it might've been, well, I think these kinds might've come in early.
You could probably get, have gotten your blueprints by now. You could've probably gotten your blueprints by now.
Oh, yeah.
It was probably, it was probably planning permissioned.
Oh, I don't like it when it considers this. Um, so, it would've been, of course, this...
Looks like that's it, yeah.
Yeah, it's the last one. Oh, there it is.
Sheet thirteen, these guys have...
Sheet thirteen?
Yeah.
I just made it mad, I'm sorry.
All right, while we're doing that, Shelby, were you completed with what you were talking about?
Yeah.
I thought, okay, and as far as the fire goes, they didn't even give a formal letter. They said there weren't any issues to comment on. So, the fire letter, um...
Fire department?
Fire department, their, their letter doesn't, it's, it's more of a text. And...
May you call the public as we look this up?
There is the...
It's, it's like there's trees on the north and south end.
Is there a note on the bottom that describes it, like, there?
They have a strip of grass or something there.
The landscape bottom, right here. So, that would be this one.
Makes it fountain grass, ornamental blue.
That one's the next to do.
This one's day lilies.
Hey.
Thank you, Shelby, for your help.
All right, so we wanna know your day lilies?
Yeah, we, how do these...
I think we should match that.
Yeah, I think we should match it. I think we should just match whatever they're doing on the other island.
Perfect.
Sweet. All right. Any other discussion from up front? I'd like to make a call to the public at this time, if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak about this issue before we close. Seeing that I'll close the call to the public and bring it back up front for more discussion or a motion.
Move approval of the sketch plan presented for thirty-five ninety-nine East Grand River, north side of Grand River, west Latson, for the relocation of an ATM, with landscaping to be in the, um...
And your plans are dated.
Swell immediately to the west of the ATM.
To match the existing plans.
Plans dated March thirteenth.
March thirteenth, twenty-five.
Be consistent with that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Did we, did we get the, did we get the discussion handled? Yes?
Discussion on what, landscaping?
I thought, I thought, yes.
Landscaping is going to match whatever they...
Perfect.
Did you have a memo of trees that you wanted?
No.
No, it just...
Landscaping will match, which is being done by...
Minimum of two deciduous trees.
Yeah, cause there's only two.
Feel generous.
Is that in here or no?
Put the two deciduous trees in.
Any other discussion?
List day lilies, okay.
Any other discussion or concerns?
Uh, discussion, do we need to add in there that the existing ATM units and infrastructure is what's to be used?
That exists in the main, while bringing the machine in. It'll replicate what is currently there.
Yeah, yeah, just to...
To match the existing...
To match what is there, yeah. Just in case they come out with some crazy colors or something, we didn't desire.
I mean, it's blue.
Purple.
Yeah, that blue.
Yeah.
All right. Are we satisfied with that motion? I'll look for support.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to our third public hearing. It's been requested that we postpone this to the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion to do that?
Move to, move to postponing.
Second.
Is that good enough, Amy?
Yes, sir.
Is that good enough?
You're postponing it to the May twelfth meeting, yes.
Yes. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. And we're on to the staff report.
Well, as of walking into this meeting, we didn't have anything, but now we have, um, we will have tap-ins. We'll be getting approval for their ice cream building that is there. They're gonna go through...
That's already there?
Yes, yes. Um, so they will be applying, and then, um, we will have the tree ordinance. And I was hoping to do the master plan kickoff for that meeting, because we did not have anything yet. However, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, cause we're not gonna be able to do the master plan meeting for the twenty-ninth.
Oh, this month, that's not happening?
No, we're gonna have to send out another due to poll to...
Okay, so take that off the calendar.
Take it off the twenty-ninth calendar?
Yes, please, yes.
I don't have Monday night back on my calendar.
There you go.
Yeah, so I asked them...
That's the twenty-eighth, I had the twenty-eighth.
Oh, twenty-eighth, I'm sorry. Twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, yeah.
So, is that it?
That is it, sir.
All right, annual report.
Oh, that shouldn't have been on there, I apologize. We already did that.
What's that?
We already did that.
Yeah.
That shouldn't have been on there.
Okay.
Will the, will the, uh, ice cream for tap-ins, will that require a field trip?
Say it, please.
Please.
I'll take a double.
Yeah.
All right, approval of the March tenth minutes?
Approved, submitted.
Oh.
Man, we're on fire, two in a row.
Wow.
Right.
All right, any member discussion?
I can do those.
Amy, is this where we're going to talk about the...
Do we need to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She'll leave a motion, I don't have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. On to member discussion. Is this where we're gonna talk about that, um, email that came in, remember?
We were gonna do that, um, in May.
In May, okay, we'll do that in May.
For the Livingston County Master Plan.
Right.
Which I received Eric's comments, and I received, um, Glennis's comments.
That email came from you?
What I suggested is that we have it as part of the members' discussion.
It's an email that Livingston County Planning is, um, looking for feedback, cause they're